So folks, I'm ready to call us in and paint the division, but I know we're gonna have presentation, so that's it. And then Robin, you wanna announce about childcare?
Yes, I don't see any children here, but if anyone is interested, there's childcare in the art room.
So this is part of our attempt to be family-friendly at all of our meetings. Second time, right? Okay, so we have quite a bit on the agenda, and one of the things is a presentation by the Academy School staff. So we need to look at what we actually need to take any action on, maybe and move that to the top before we head into the presentation. And I think, Kelly, you told them probably about 5:20, so that would give us a few minutes to get through. And I do have to leave myself at like 5:45, so when I leave, it's not against anybody at all, just so we know. We do wanna see the presentation. Alright, so we could start by looking at number two, review prioritizing established desired outcomes. So look at the agenda, if there's anything else. David, you had mentioned two things, I know. One was the parking lot items, specifically looking at them and seeing if we could get them onto an agenda and the work plan.
Yes, well, not so much the work plan, because that's kinda static. I mean, we add things to it, but... Oh, I see, yeah.
Well, let's look at what's on there and see whether they can move off of like a whole...
Yeah, I was thinking more that the, that we adopt a parking lot and include it in the minutes and in the agenda.
So we'll talk about that, too.
Now?
No, I think that needs to go under unfinished.
Yes.
And the other would be, you had forwarded something about Vermont School Board Association's letter.
Yeah, and everybody hasn't had a chance to read that, so I'm happy to wait for a budge time to talk about that. I just wanted everybody to have the information.
Okay, so that's been forwarded. So maybe, could you make it a note for yourself to make sure you forward it to Barb, so that she can put on the website as something that we reviewed individually. Does that work, Lyle?
Yeah, that's good.
Thank you, Joe.
Yes, and I can't see people in this configuration.
I need to get out, get out a little bit early. I have an obligation about 6:45.
Okay, so let's do actionable items first. Mark is missing his soccer game, I know, over there, too. Alright.
Two incredibly excellent baseball games.
Oh, baseball games, too. Okay, moving on, we'll do some school board business, some agenda. Anybody have anything else that we need to do, or can we?
I moved, we approved the ministry last meeting and the warrants.
Second.
And the agenda?
And the agenda.
Second and still, David?
And the agenda.
Adding on the agenda. Did you get all that, Kelly?
Yep.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so I'm gonna skip committee reports unless there's something actionable. Is there anything that needs to have action on for the Policy Council?
No.
Anything for Energy Committee? Actionable. Alternative Governance Subcommittee? Nothing actionable. Finance Committee? Executive Committee? Diversity Committee? Nothing actionable.
We haven't even met since last meeting.
So does anyone even wanna have a report? Sounds like no for any of them. Okay, moving. Administrative reports, folks, is there anything actionable that you wanna bring up right now?
Okay.
No?
Can I just pass out my report?
Yeah.
I was asked in my superintendent evaluation to give information about all schools. This is just my first attempt draft, so I'll give you hard copy. The other request was that I talk more about outreach, community outreach that I do. So there's also a section here on community outreach, so you don't need to spend time on it, but there you have it.
Thank you.
If you have suggestions or things that you would like to see in this, you can let me know, and this is just...
Can you ask Barb to post this, too?
I think so.
I think, yeah, I was very careful to put anything under 10 as fewer than 10, so I think we'll be safe with that.
So people know. I think it's good.
Yep.
Alright, so we'll review this, and if we have any comments on how to change it, we get back to Lyle. And does, do you have anything we needed to take action on that's not on the agenda?
Nope.
Okay. So then we'll come, go right into unfinished business, which the only thing on that was the parking lot idea. Steve, that's your David.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we have a number of things that we talked about wanting to talk about, and so I wanted to have those included in our, in the minutes, and then also at the bottom of the agenda, parking lot, those topics.
So can we look at, you had those topics, right?
Um, yeah.
Can we look at what we've already got on there and see if anything can actually move onto an agenda or part of the work plan, and then see if we still need another spot to keep?
Okay, well, a couple of them are on, are on here tonight, the diversity and gender follow-up and Leadership Councils. So the report on the teacher leader program and budget needs in each school, which could be in the budget.
So say it again slowly, so I can...
Report on the teacher leader program and budget needs in each school.
So those are two separate things, right?
No, it's the same thing. The budget needs for teacher leader program.
Ah, budget regarding teacher leaders.
And how they, how it's manifest in the different buildings.
So I'd like to see that while we're forming the budget, or before we do that, right?
Yeah.
There's, the next meeting is just administrative reports, and then the 28th is budget updates, so it seems like November 7th meeting might be good to look at teacher leaders and how they go into the budget. November 28th, we get budget updates on staff and materials. It could also go in there. When are you folks meeting to start putting together the first?
We haven't had an initial meeting with Frank yet.
Frank's sending that out, actually, by the end of the week.
Okay.
So usually sometime in the middle of November, you start, and then we see it sometime in the beginning of December?
They'll start soon, before...
They'll start planning in October, October into November.
So next weekend, or like one and a half weeks of October, so...
They'll start, they'll start budget processes next week.
Next week.
Okay. And do you still submit different budgets from each school, or different requests? Because we'd like to see those, at least we talked about in the past.
Right, we've talked about in the past, and David and I are still rather fond of the different colors for different schools, so that we could tell what was going on in each school. It predates all of you now that are over there, but we could have, it was a real clear way of seeing, you know, like Oak Grove was getting this much this year, and then it felt like you were keeping things balanced, but in our heads, I'm sure you guys always did. So November 28th with the budget updates, would that be a good time to hear about teacher leaders? David?
I thought you said 7th, so I wrote it down. Yeah, that's fine.
Well, it could go on the 7th with the budget updates, I was thinking.
Yeah.
Okay. Does that sound alright for you folks, that while you're giving us some budget updates, you would also be able to tell us about teacher leaders and how they're paid, and how many there are, and what you're using them for in each school? Alright, next.
Integrated field review follow-up, and again, that can wait until after the budget stuff is done. Just to, I just wanted to check in, it's kind, this is the thing we're supposed to be focusing on, so just wanted to, and you're probably way ahead of me on this, but I just wanted to make sure that we're, you know, we're here regularly, yeah.
Yep, it's good. And we could roll it into looking at our continuous improvement plans, because that's where we really focus on those.
Put it in. So where would that...
There's much more specifics about our actual schools in those.
Right.
So where would you think that falls?
Do we have...
I don't see it.
Not yet.
So after town meeting, would you want, or would you want it before?
I think we'd want it before town meeting.
So, almost you're gonna push yourself into somewhere around January 2nd. Oh, no, that's Oak Grove.
But about December 5th, parent climate reports.
Yeah, you could go there. December 5th?
December 5th, so would each of you be able to bring your continuous improvement plan on that day? We can look at it ahead of time and see where we're...
And it was integrated fields study?
Integrated field review.
And improvement plans for together.
Yeah, and together.
Alright, so I've got this, I've got the thing I can send when we're done here. And what else is on parking lot?
More community engagement, which started with the, with the childcare, but...
And also Lyle's telling us about how she's, and her reviews.
Yeah.
So that might be next meeting, because we've got, we're gonna be going over the report.
So what else were you thinking when you say more community engagement, that we were gonna ask to engage the community in some way specific?
Yeah, well, just that I would love to see if we could brainstorm some ways to publicize our meetings and what we're talking about at the meetings more, and continue offering childcare. Next, next meeting is the last one that we have this arranged for so far, the childcare, so we can get ways that we could get more of that, or keep it going.
Maybe we'll just put that on the agenda for next one?
Okay. I don't think it'll be a very lengthy discussion.
No, but just to kinda keep it...
Yep.
So that's for the number seven?
Yeah, we'll just put it on the agenda.
It's gonna be on the agenda, so.
Doesn't really have to go so much on the work plan, I think, but...
And next one is the progress of individual students receiving early intervention educational support services. How can we see that? How can, how can that be reported so we can see the progress?
So I'm wondering about January 16th, we scheduled down for social worker helping families and individuals becoming independent. That would kind of dovetail in there, right?
Yeah.
So give me wording to put down, David?
Progress, early intervention educational support services, programs.
And I think that'll feed in nicely if we talk about it in January. It'll feed in nicely to our planning for the town meeting.
Yes.
To be able to say, you know, these are, this is what we've been asking you to invest in, and this is how we've been seeing it manifest.
And the last one is the pre-K, having, inviting pre-K community providers to present?
We talked about that a little bit, that came up on the, your report, I think. And I think you talked about it once, Jerry, too, that'd be nice to hear kind of from the town in a general way, and our early education partners. So...
Wouldn't we need to check with majority of them before we actually put them on the plan?
Yeah, see when some people are available to actually come in.
Well, I think we schedule it and we ask if they can come on that night.
There's an EES focused, again, on February 6th. Is that overwhelming?
Is that alright?
Yeah, I mean, I did mine last time, we were, last, two weeks ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, they can have that spot.
Okay. So we'll do, we call that early education partners?
Perfect.
Partners report? Okay, anything else?
That's all that I wrote down.
Alright, what was the date on that, please? We're thinking February 6th that we would ask, and that people can do that. If nobody can do it that night, we've changed. Okay, any other unfinished business? Alright. We need a new policy for EES, if there's action required for early, or EES leave request in September. It's on the agenda, new policy for EES action needed.
So, I don't have a copy room, so I'm gonna go from memory. This is a policy that we need to have in place, because we do run year-round, and staff do earn vacation time, and we really are wanting to not allow teachers to take any time off unless it's an emergency for the month of September, because we find that that's a critical time for relationships to be formed with children and teachers, and we're finding the need to be able to have a policy behind that belief to help us enforce that.
So if you pass the policy at Policy Council, do we need to actually see the policy and approve it? Is that...
And I distributed that at our last meeting.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so then we can actually, we can actually vote on it. Anyone wanna make a motion to approve that policy?
Yep, we approve the EES leave request policy as presented.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. And an update on our West Barnabriel Fire Station land?
So, this actually, you do not need signatures. Bob Fisher sent us paperwork that we are to post. It had signature papers, it had signature places for both school board and select board, so we put it on the agenda to bring for you to sign, but then Bob Fisher said, "No, you don't need signatures." So we've sent it back to Bob to say, "Will you review it one more time, and if we don't need the signatures, we'll post it." So that's where we are.
So no one complained in the amount of time, so it will go through in the next one. Okay. Diversity Training and Gender Inclusive Follow-Up.
So I, after our last meeting and talking a little bit with Lyle, I think that what we should do right now is just have a little bit of a discussion for our board about what we would like to see here, and then she can help translate that into some actionable goals.
It would be really helpful for us as administrators, working in schools, to know if the board has specific goals that they're looking for, and that will help us form individual goals for schools. When, when principals are forming goals, they're looking at the needs of the school, but we also want to be able to respond if the board has specific things that they're really looking for, looking toward with their mission and vision of how we operate. But unless we have sort of a clearer idea of what it is that your overall goals are in terms of diversity and equity, it's hard for us to be able to just, you know, pick out a goal, and we don't know if that's really what you need. So Robin and I met today to just kind of figure out what would be the best course forward, and I think for us, the best course is for you to let us know, and then I work with the administrators. The administrators, administrators set goals on professional standards for educational leaders. There is a standard around equity, so it's not far-fetched for that, and a lot of what we've been doing really is in that specific standard.
So would it make sense for us to see what's already there in the standard?
In the standard? You can send that up?
Could you send that?
Yes, that'd be a very good starting point.
And I think if we, and I think we, we all have Dottie's slideshow now, and I think if we look through, there are a bunch of suggestions and kind of a structure that she presented that we could look at and talk to. Well, there are a lot of things, the ones that I remember aren't necessarily the important ones, but we can just review what her, you know, what her suggestions were.
So am I hearing that we'll hear from Lyle, we'll review with Dottie, and we'll come back to this, and put this on the agenda for one more time next month? Does that sound...
Yep, that sounds good.
And maybe at the same time, if administrators have any thoughts when you review through, and see if there's something, particularly anything that you're already doing that we don't know about, that maybe already fits in there, might be good to remind us so when we're looking at it. Alright, so I'm gonna put this on for next time again. Alright, so...
So that's on for November 7th?
It's on for next agenda, yep.
Excellent.
So Leadership Councils has been tabled once and moved down. I think the idea on that was, we could certainly try to implement them here, as was written up for both the Study Committee's merger plan and the AGS proposal, and we were, seemed to be in unanimous agreement that that would be a good idea. Yes?
Was the thing on the agenda about how should we form them? Is that what the agenda item was meant to be?
I think it was if, how, and what.
Because I think that both the Study Committee proposal and the AGS plan said form leadership committees, so either way, that's something that we are gonna do, it seems like.
Not yes and no.
Right.
It's, it really depends on what, if, if this, if the state should mandate what they include.
Right, it's not in the states...
It's not in the states.
Articles of merger, their bylaws and all that. When they put it together, that was something we had come up with, but I still think that yes, because everybody seemed to think it was the good thing to do, and I think our discussion was, we're the easiest group to show that, because we have three different schools.
Right.
So as I recall, the Leadership Council, the idea was it would be basically a parent-teacher group with additional, kind of taken from the Policy Council, so additional community leadership. And then what else do I missing?
Administrator and board member.
Administrator, board member, yeah.
And a board member.
Community group, parents, teachers.
Staff.
Yeah, teachers.
And staff, yes, right.
So there are, I just heard about this today, there are some districts that are working with, I think it's the Public Assets Institute, on how to develop, I think that's who they're working with, on, and beginning to develop an idea, so I can look into that and see if I can find out and share that.
Either that, or I was gonna say, it might be as simple as saying to you guys over there at your next parent meeting, to throw out the idea and see if, what the parents and the staff that come to your meetings that are already in existence, and then come back to us and tell us next time, like, what did the parents think of this idea? And they may have a community member that they think would be really good to have on there, or there may be a teacher that's already jumping up and down and saying, "Pick me, pick me", maybe.
Well, they're stakeholder groups, so the parents need to choose their reps, and the teachers need to choose their reps. And I think that the, it's important to keep diversity, inclusiveness in mind in terms of structuring that as well, so that, there may be more to it.
When you say the parents need to choose their reps, are you saying this is like an elected thing from within the school?
Well, as stakeholders, they would, you know, if we, if we chose a couple of parents, then it wouldn't necessarily represent, we would be choosing the stakeholders from the parents, rather than the parents themselves choosing their reps.
When the Study Committee and the AGS proposal, when we looked at that, the idea was, I think from town meeting, that they might be somewhat appointed, I believe.
That's what they have talked about at, for the smaller towns, for these three schools. It seems like it would have to be a little bit different process.
Yeah.
So that's why I was thinking, maybe if you went to your first, you know, just bring it up at a parent meeting and see, and bring it up at a staff meeting, and see whether there's any input, 'cause we would kind of be the trial of this in a lot of ways.
And I think similarly to diversity, we need to provide some articulation of the goals and what we would want them to be doing.
Yeah, and the goals that we stated, sorry, that's a good point, in the Study Committee and the AGS merger was to provide, because there would not be individual school boards, to provide feedback, including on the budget. So there would be direct communication, and that a board member from whichever boards end up being in existence would have direct communications still back to each school, because if it is a merged unit, you only have one school board for the high school, the middle school, all of the outlying schools, and all of us.
And I think that might be a place where the integrated, the education quality standards would play a role in terms of what they should be concerned with, because that's what we're all supposed to be concerned with, as well as the budget, obviously. Well, budget's part of the quality standards.
So I think a good first step does sound like we could ask them to look into it, right? And come back to...
And you, the board, thinking about what, what is it, what are the goals that you're hoping that this Leadership Councils would be able to...
Alright, so next time, the board will articulate goals, and you guys, administrators will say what you saw as problems, or potentials, or enthusiasm, or lack of. What was the feedback from staff and from parents and community members, if you run into anybody that you think would be good? Okay, so enrollment numbers by grade in classroom, that was just kind of a handout question, with that.
Yep, that's in here, though.
Jerry put it on the back of her, I don't know if anybody started last time, Mark did as well.
That, you know, she's there having to have how many kids per classroom, so that's...
I think we have Green Street and Oak Grove.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was thinking it was for the next, the monthly report for November.
That's fine, yep.
So I knew we weren't recording, so, okay.
Okay, Mark has it, so we'll give it. That way we can digest it one by one, which is good. Alright, so really, there's only one thing left. It's just the review of, sorry, the regional spoon, what you had asked for, the BSBA Regional Meeting Follow-Up Health Benefits Report.
Yeah, I wanted to point out, I went to that meeting and I was really struck, because I had, I was always hearing about, but never quite understood or realized what was happening between the state and health benefits for the teachers in the state. Now I understand that at least, there's some agreement, but there hasn't been a contract written that there'll be a statewide healthcare for all the teachers. And that has, and I wanted to point out that I don't know how this will actually work out in the end, because health, it'll now start to shift labor actions from the local to the statewide. So now we're moving towards the same kind of statewide potential strikes, like West Virginia, Kentucky, Arizona, where the whole states go out. And that's gonna be one of the results of consolidating everything on the state level. However, on the other side of that, it is, there's also potential legislation or, or change, you say, some kind of administrative change, to put every single public worker in the state, from the governor, the administration, down to everybody working in every school, police departments, fire departments, et cetera, on one single health plan. And, and that, that creates another very interesting situation, and the plus side of that is it's a small, but not insignificant piece in moving the state, the whole state, towards universal single payer healthcare. So it's, this, this healthcare business is really up in the air right now, and it's pretty hard to predict what's gonna happen.
I will say that WSCSU does have a teacher on that committee, statewide committee, so I feel like we're represented. I echo your concerns. The states where they have strikes are the states where it's statewide health, statewide contracts, statewide everything, and I'm concerned about that.
Okay, I don't think there's any action to be taken, but thanks for noticing that. Alright, now this has been a record meeting. We've gotten through all the actual stuff, and now we can go on to the actual presentation. And if the rest of you guys had something else you wanted to report, Jerry and Mark, and Deb, at the end, certainly don't forget.
The best place for us to stand is gonna be up, or on this thing, if you want.
Okay.
Alright, so good evening, and we're really excited about what we have to share with you tonight. We have a bunch of our awesome colleagues here to educate you about what we have going on at Academy School this year. The theme of our presentation tonight is Embracing Diversity: How Academy School Helps Every Child Succeed. So some of the things you'll be hearing about are specific case studies of kids who have received supports in any number of ways. You'll hear a little bit about our Antioch Intern Partnership, and a little bit about some other kind of supplemented programs that we have going on. I'm gonna share with you our core beliefs. We believe that the purpose of our work as educators is to advance the learning and achievement of all of our students by providing them with opportunities that are socially productive and academically rigorous. And the emphasis is on all. We think about all kids when we make decisions, our continuous improvement plan, the work we do every day. And I'd like to invite Deb Cardine to come on up. She's our Antioch Intern Coordinator.
So you guys have heard...
So you guys have heard from me a fair bit, so I'm really excited to be back and share this year's internship program with you. We have three interns at Academy, in our community, and I, unless you feel like you need an overview, which I don't feel like you do, I thought it might be nice just for you to hear a little bit about how this internship experience for them is very different from the others that they might have been involved in. So for one thing, our cooperating teachers this year have been involved in a fair amount of professional development. We meet monthly, and that's been going really well, I think. It's been exciting because we're working with Green Street this year, so we have this nice diverse community of teachers working together, and we talk about things like giving feedback and how to support our interns while also, you know, really challenging them. Our interns are really immersed in our community, they're here for the full year. Our faculty has a good sense of what they're doing, and we really have a team that is working with them. And they, they really have a, we're shooting for a close alignment with their coursework and the practical experience they're having in their classroom. So those meetings have also been kind of devoted to that, making sure their assignments are known by their, by their teachers. And then lastly, the supervision that they receive is a great deal more than what they would in a regular internship. So they're working with me regularly, they're working with Orlie, our site supervisor, in addition to the work they do with their teachers. So unless you have any questions about those quick little things, I would like to...
I just wanna make a comment that I discussed this program at the Southeast Superintendent's meeting last week. Everybody in the state really needs teachers. We recognize that there are not enough, and it's getting worse, and we know that we need to develop our own teachers, and so you may be contacted by some other superintendents, like, how can we recreate that program?
Yeah, that's very exciting.
Yeah.
And it's forming still, but we're having a great time. I wanna introduce, so we have two of our three interns here, I really want you to hear more from them.
I have one quick question.
Yeah, go.
Can we take more? Is there a role in our schools to take more interns?
That's something we've been talking about. I think there's, there's kind of like a crucial balance of
Right.
teachers that are excited and willing and committed to taking on that role, and funding, of course. We do have eyes on other schools, I think there's kind of a balance within each school of how much each school, but within, you know, our variety of school settings that we have within our district.
Can we include early childhood?
I love that. I love that, especially as we get preschools into the, to the schools to have collaboration with the early childhood services. All right, so we have two of our interns here, and we have two of our cooperating teachers. I'd like to invite May Knowles to come on up and tell us a little bit about her experience. May, introduce yourself and kind of where you are.
Hello, so my name's May, and I have been working in outdoor education, and I was a Raff guide for a while, so my background is really nature-based stuff and place-based education. And so I'm going to Antioch, and this is my technically second semester at Antioch. And this experience has, at Academy School, has been the most valuable part of my graduate program thus far, and I expect it will continue to be that way. So it's been really incredible having Deb in the school and available for advice and feedback all the time. So I, I get a lot of help from her for tutoring, and I'm actually able to take what I'm learning in my courses at Antioch and directly apply them, like even sometimes the next day or next week from when I'm learning them, in the classroom and while I'm tutoring. So that's been really incredible to learn these things that can seem pretty abstract when you're reading about them, like, oh yeah, that's a great idea, but then be able to come into school and have real live children that either tell me how great this idea was or how great maybe it really is not. That's been really amazing, and I feel like I've learned so much already, and this program as a whole has exceeded my expectations, for sure. Yeah, I don't know, is there, are there any particular questions or things you would like to hear about?
Thank you. This is Darylin Burks.
Maybe. I'll get over it. I'm Darylin Burks, I have a really similar background to May in outdoor ed. I worked teaching primitive skills and nature connection work to kids for a while, and was a little involved in administration, and that's what kind of brought me to wanting to be a teacher. I was like, I think I wanna do this kid thing full-time, and that's brought me to Antioch. I second a lot of what May said, and a lot of, a big reason as to why I moved to this area was so that I could do my internship at Academy and knowing that there was a lot more support and scaffolding in this, in this program with both Deb and Orlie. But in, in general, and just communicating with some of my other classmates that aren't in a program that is, that is structured in the way that the program is here at Academy, I've noticed just comparisons that I feel so much more immersed in this community. Like, I don't just have a relationship with Chris, who's, Chris Beal is my cooperating teacher, I have a relationship with everyone else in the building, and they also are a part of my learning journey here, which feels, it feels nice, like I feel really integrated as opposed to feeling like, oh, I'm this like other thing that everyone else in the building doesn't know. So that feels, that feels important, both like be immersed in the community and also be modeling how we form community for the kids. As far as, yeah, I think I'll reiterate what May said about just support from both Deb and Orlie, and it hasn't happened yet, but I'm really hoping Orlie has reached out of, that she's interested in helping me to actually plan some curriculum. And so obviously, like, teachers are really busy, and we're all really busy, but having people that are here that are watching out for me, that I can plug in and bounce other ideas off of and get resources from other people feels really unique and special, and I don't think that's happening at other, at other programs. So, yeah, that's what I have. Any questions or anything?
And we have our two cooperating teachers, Nicole Plimpton and Chris Beal.
Some good pictures. I'm Nicole Plimpton, I teach third grade at, here at Academy, and May is my intern, and she's wonderful. She's really been able to like expand my thinking. I feel like this year is where I've grown the most as an educator. It's my fifth year teaching, but just our conversations and collaboration that we have together, I'm able to really challenge what I'm teaching and how I'm teaching it and really extend it. Another thing that's been wonderful is she's excellent in the outdoor world, and that's something that I am not as strong in, so it's been great to get our kids out into the woods, into our natural playground, and in our forest, and building community out there, and she's teaching me, I feel like, as much as I'm helping her, so it's been really great.
Hey, I'm Chris Beal, grade five, with Darylin, works with me.
I would agree with Nicole that definitely having an intern in your classroom forces you to articulate why you're doing what you're doing and really plan ahead a little bit more so that you can articulate that and explain the hows and the whys and problem-solve things. So that's helpful, I think I agree with my own instruction. I would say that just having another, like, super-invested, motivated, energetic individual in the building is such a gift to our kids, like the amount, the relationship, what our kids need is relationship, and so now you have this extra adult that they can connect with, and right away from the beginning, you know, there are more opportunities for small group and individual attention. We've been doing math workshop in my classroom this year for the first time, and it really allows us to block it out and have stations where multiple adults are running what kids need, so we can do more extensions and, you know, interventions and also continue with the target, so I think. I mean, the quality of the instruction that you can deliver when you have a partner is pretty awesome. Another thing that we are doing, we have a meeting once a month with all of the Green Street cooperating teachers and all of the Academy cooperating teachers, where we're able to have a professional learning community, and we do readings, we collaborate about what's going on, what goals we're meeting, what we can work on to improve our classrooms and the experience for the interns, which has been really helpful.
Questions? I just wanna say thank you to the board, and thanks to Mark and Kelly and John for the, for the support you guys have provided, because without you guys, we wouldn't be doing this, so tremendous thank you.
We wouldn't do it if you weren't doing so, it should work. It's definitely worth it.
Great, thank you.
So we're gonna boom our, our presentation on to talking a little bit about our continuous improvement plan, and we'll just briefly outline the three main goals that we have as part of that plan, and that will frame what you hear a little bit later in the case studies that will be presented to you and what you'll hear from the counseling department.
So as we sort of get into that, some of the language that's gonna be embedded in a lot of our work as a school and a lot of things you'll hear today is related to multi-tiered systems and supports, which is sort of a national initiative that's really become a central core component of all schools really around the country. And so just to give a quick brief overview, because we will reference tier one, tier two, tier three throughout our presentation, so just to go over what that means. MTSS is, they're sort of parallel systems, or academic systems and behavior systems. And so speaking academically, when we talk about tier one academic instruction, that refers to sort of instruction that is provided to all students, sort of the general curriculum. And so you see, like, when you see a triangle, sort of the green essentially represents the entire student body, so that would be our literacy curriculum or our math curriculum, or things that are, that every student in our community is exposed to. We'll talk about tier two intervention, and that is those students that need a little bit more, that, that aren't making the progress that we would hope that they would make in response to the general curriculum. So we're gonna talk about some of the things that we do from a tier two intervention perspective. The goal is, you know, that that's roughly five to 15% of your student body, and ours is a little bit higher than that, but we'll talk about that, so just a little extra. When we start talking about tier three academically, that gets generally is aligned with the field of special education, and those students that really have significant needs that need to be addressed through truly specialized instruction. So parallel on the behavior side of the MTSS structure, when we talk about tier one behavior programming, that's things that we do school-wide. We are not a PBIS school, which some of the schools in our district are, but there are some things that we do school-wide from the behavioral realm that we'll talk about for everybody. And then, just like before, those students that need a little extra support from a behavior perspective, we're gonna talk about what we do for tier two supports behaviorally for students. And then, just like in the academic side, there are students that really need a highly specialized behavior program, and we'll talk about what we do for those students. So when we talk about tier one, tier two, tier three, that's what we're referencing, and that's how we sort of structure our own intervention systems and structures.
Another way for you to look at it, this doesn't have the triangle, which I like and I wanted you to see. This lays out a little more clearly what it looks like at Academy School. So in tier one, all of our kids are receiving the high-quality curriculum and instruction, that's classroom teachers, parents, academic support teachers, everybody's collaborative in that process. Behaviorally, all students are explicitly taught expectations in all settings, that's part of our plan that we're actually working on this year. We're gonna be establishing some new, what we'd call a universal school expectation, so that every student and every staff member feels really good about what they are no matter where we are. In tier two, some students receive supplemental instructional support, so they might have what we'd call a double-dose group, where they get the same instruction from the big classroom lesson in a smaller group setting. They might have academic support services during skills block, they might receive tutoring. On the behavioral level, they might use the planning room a little bit more often, they might have a check-in mentor buddy with an adult in the building, they might have a little bit more in place as far as rewards incentives. And then the tier three, like John mentioned, would be mostly special ed, small group instruction, and a specialized student behavior plan, which could be coordinated by Step Services depending on what the need is.
So our continuous improvement program has goals oriented in three areas. The first is safe and healthy schools, really sort of a primary focus of hopefully all schools, really. And a primary piece of that for us is to focus on improving student behavior and making Academy School a safe and safe school for everybody. You know, we really take the approach that if there's one student in this building that doesn't feel safe coming to school, that that's a crisis for that student, and that's something that we need, that is really deserved our full attention. It's just a top priority. So with that, we have a couple of things that we are continually working to improve and to refine and develop. One is to create and adopt a clear tier one behavior support system, so sort of a behavior structure that we do school-wide for everybody. And Andrew Spino, one of our teacher leaders here, is working on sort of forming a committee to really sort of work and refine and develop what we do school-wide for every student from the behavioral standpoint. And so we're really looking forward to that coming along. And as part of that, part of the goal of that committee is gonna be to train and support faculty in implementing behavior strategies that are consistent across classrooms, because in 21 classrooms in this building, it's not always consistent from classroom to classroom to classroom, and so trying to develop consistent language and consistent practices is a focus of ours. With that is also refining what we do for those students that need a little bit extra. One of the things that Kelly and I have been doing for the last, over the past month is creating a check-in and checkout system. And what that is, is just kids that need just a little sort of extra adult attention, you know, that may be struggling at home, or might be struggling behaviorally in school. And so we, we made a list of about 60 students in the building that we thought could use a little bit extra adult attention throughout the day, and we had staff members just volunteer to sign up to say, to pick two students that are typically outside of their usual daily experience, and to just go out of the way and check in with that student, generally at the beginning of the day, at the end of the day. Say, hey, you know, how you doing? We find that a caring adult in the building that doesn't have to care about you really means a lot. You know, it might be a former teacher, it might be, you know, someone that you might see in the playground or something like that, but it's been, the enthusiasm on our staff's part has been pretty remarkable, and it's been really well-received and effective. And so that's something that we've established this year that we continue to refine and work on. And then, as Kelly mentioned, part of our safe and healthy schools is really continuing to support those students that need a really high level of behavior support, and we do that through Step Services. And Step Services is a phenomenally proactive, supportive program in our school that develops really compassionate behavior plans for students. And they engage in reinforcement systems and establishing positive behavior and reinforcing positive behavior, and there's been a change in personnel in that program in our building this year, and it's been phenomenal, really great.
A quick question before you shoot.
Yes.
The syntax for that is, is, it's written as goals. Are these things that you're going to do or things you're in the process of doing, or is, or this are...
Yeah, these, these are things that we are in the process of doing and will continue to, to work on, because they're, they're critical elements of a, of a school community. And so when we talk about tier one behavior support system... And so when we talk about tier one behavior support system, that's in process. While tier two and tier three are pretty well-established, but ever-changing in response to student need. Because we find that the needs of students in our building are ever-changing. And it's our responsibilities as a school to change with them. And so we're constantly sort of tweaking and looking at ways to improve.
I just had a question about the first one. My understanding is that an example of a tier one behavior support system would be the PBIS model that they use at the other schools. And you guys seem like you're deciding to develop your own tailored-to-Academy thing instead of that. Could you just say a little bit about what you see as being different in the needs or the goals of what you're doing?
So John and I have both worked in PBIS schools quite a bit. So we feel pretty familiar with the concept of PBIS and that might be a route that Academy chooses to go to in the future. It's not something that we chose to do this year, but something that we can do this year that could later be adapted if we chose to do PBIS is to create those universal expectations. And really, what it's, the emphasis is developing the expectations and then teaching them and revisiting them several times throughout the year and going to the settings to do that. So that way, if I see any student in the school, I can say, remember, we walk on the right side of the hallway. And they'll say, oh, right, we talked about that in class. It's the little things sometimes that you wouldn't think of that make a big difference. And it aligns everybody. It's okay that all of our classroom teachers have different ways and different incentives that they do, but it's what is the commonality.
Different ways of getting to the same goal.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think that we like a lot of the elements of PBIS, which is common language in the building and common expectations and communal celebrations and things like that. But we also want to maintain autonomy for our teachers to develop systems within their own classroom that are tried and true and they find to be really effective. And so it's sort of finding that balance of some communal norms and expectations while allowing teachers to do what they want works.
Our second goal is based on academic achievement. We are hoping to increase the number of students who score at the proficiency level or above in the areas of reading and math on the 2019 S-Back. In order to do that, we have adopted and are implementing, with the best fidelity we can, a reading series, which is Reading Street. We've talked a little bit about that. It's a big curriculum, there's a lot of moving parts. Our staff's been working really hard to make sure that we're doing the best we can. We've got some professional development coming up for that. We, this was written when we had plans to also do some school-wide professional development around the areas of Engage New York Math. We chose to devote our PD to Reading Street this year, that's why it's in there. But we do actually have, we've been utilizing Team DLC who's moved to the math coaching position. So a lot of teachers are trying out new formats like the math workshop. And creating a more effective intervention program in reading and math, that's being done in a lot of areas, from the school support team to working with our coaches, Brian and Paul. And lastly, to utilize social emotional learning and the tiers of behavior model, which we just talked about, to increase student engagement and motivation.
And finally, our last cool area is around effective collaboration and leadership. And so for this, we are really relying a lot on our teacher leaders. They're here tonight. Thank you guys for coming. And it, you know, it comes from conversations that Kelly and I have had and I've had with a number of our staff that oftentimes in education, you get stuck in this mentality of looking for the outside answer, right? That's gonna be like the golden ticket, that's gonna increase your scores and, you know, and make you a high-performing school. And the reality is, we have those tools in our building. There's, there's the, all the expertise that we need exists within the staff in our building. And the question becomes, how do we collaborate effectively among the 95 staff members that come to Academy School every day to work collectively as a unit to support all students? And so with that, we're starting to work on establishing a peer-to-peer observation feedback loop. So we envision a system where a teacher might be struggling implementing a Reading Street curriculum or, you know, a particular lesson, and then having another teacher resource in the building that they could go to and ask for advice and observe and get feedback and just utilizing the expertise that exists within Academy School. And so that's a big focus, will be a big focus of our teacher leaders this year is working on establishing that framework. Academy School Staff Handbook, pretty straightforward, which we did. And continuing to talk about the MTSS framework as we did with you tonight and to refine and restructure what tier two and tier three intervention looks like, along with the adoption of new curriculum in both literacy and math.
All right, we'd like to invite Judith Palmieri up. Judith is our school counselor. I believe you're all familiar with her.
Hello. So I'm gonna just talk briefly about my work. All of you know me and they know a lot of what I'm doing, so I'll try to make it pretty brief. I think one of the things that's important that Kelly was saying is that as we look at our model of how we educate kids, we wanna make sure that there's a lot that's for everyone. And one of the things that's really important in my work is that parents, teachers, students know that counseling services are for everyone, that it's not a select group or lead group, anyone can access services. And my goal would be that the students would see me as a trusted adult that cares about them and that my office is a place that's peaceful, that we can both share laughter there and tears, that we can problem solve. But again, it's accessible to all. So one of the things that's listed up here is the second step curriculum. I teach that in many classrooms, you might be familiar with that because I know other schools are using that as well. This is a curriculum that's research-based, originally out of Washington State. It's an anti-bullying, anti-violence curriculum that teaches social skills. And one of the things that's important to know is that these are skills that are not innate, but they can be taught. You can actually teach empathy, you can teach the ability to take another perspective, you can teach listening skills, how to make and keep friends, how to control impulses, strong emotions, this kind of thing. The teachers, many of the teachers use it, they have it available to them. So again, it's not, you know, just for some people, it's for anyone that chooses to use that. There are other things that might come in and teach different than that. A particular teacher might say, can you please come in and just do a little unit on boy-girl relationships or conflict resolution? And I'm certainly willing to do that. The other thing we have up here is groups, that's a huge part of my work. I've always really believed in the power of groups in terms of not just the content, but the process. If I could stretch myself far enough, I'd love to have every kid in the school be able to be in a group because I think it can be a really healthy and powerful experience. Some of the groups are at lunchtime, those are very fluid. I have kids maybe stop me in the hallway and say, please, you know, can I have a couple of friends come down for lunch? So I try to be available as much as possible for that. The other thing that we started maybe four or five years ago in my coworker colleague, Lori Macy, who will speak after me, partners with me, is that we have every single kindergarten student get to come down and be in a group so that they get, again, to come down to the office, know that I'm a helping person, that I'm someone they can trust, that we can have fun and get to have that first experience of being part of a group, cooperating, taking turns, sharing, that kind of thing. In addition to that, there's a large number of groups that I do that could be based on a particular topic and a need or a particular class. I just had a fifth grade teacher ask me about some boys that are having a lot of issues, so I'm gonna be developing a group for them. I have a third grade group that I'm starting tomorrow, I think it is, around some girls that are having a lot of issues, getting along and dealing with each other on the playground. And the other thing I'm doing that I'm excited about is Scott Coltenbaugh, who works for the Broward Borough Area Prevention Coalition, is gonna come in with me. And we're gonna do some groups with the fourth grade classes targeted specifically on the things that we just taught in the classroom. So we'll get an even deeper chance for them to talk about conflict resolution, how to be peaceful, how to make good choices, maybe in a moment when it's a heated time. So I think I'm really looking forward to that, it's gonna be a lot of fun. Finally, there is also certainly kids that come to see me for one-on-one check-ins. That could be for a variety of reasons. It might be like a student that just moved new to the area. Could be students that have maybe more stress than normal at home, maybe some changes at home that they're adapting to. So again, I think the important thing here is that the students know that I'm a safe person that they can come to. In a lot of the groups, we do activities that are specifically focused on problem-solving and challenges that they do together. So they will not come down to my room, and sometimes kids are disappointed with this, and find games where they're gonna win, and some person's gonna win and some is gonna lose. And I have to tell them, I'm sorry, I don't have games like that, but I do have a game where we could all have a challenge together and work it out and sort of beat the game or beat the challenge. And they can get on board with that and they think that that's fun. The last thing that I wanted to mention, which is not on here, but it's just something exciting that I have recently found out about. The kids that are on the leadership teams for the whole district have another day of training in January. So there are some high school kids, I think it's all girls, the four of them, who have stepped forward and said, we wanna do a teaching unit during that day on hate incidents and how to respond to that and how to be an active bystander. So they asked if I'd be willing to help kind of coach them through that process and I'm really excited about that. So I think it's like a week from Friday night or something. They were starting because I had to work around their schedule. But that'll be something that the leadership kids will have training and then from there, I'll try to see how I can bring that down to the rest of the building. Any questions? And I just wanna say too, I think you know this, but I also wanna offer this, that any of you are welcome anytime to please call me or if you wanna come in and observe me teach or just talk about this in more depth, I'm happy to do that.
I'm Lori Macy and I work for HRS, which is our local community mental health agency. And, but my office is actually right here in the school, so my position is school-based. So Kelly asked me to be here tonight to just kind of give you an idea of things that I do here. So part of what I do is I meet with students individually and those students would be HRS clients. And those referrals come from various places. They'll come through EST meetings, they'll come from teachers. They might come from Judith or like a parent might actually go to HRS on Fairview Street for an intake and find out that, you know, there's a clinician right at Academy School that their child can meet with. And so I'll get referrals that way as well. So I do, I meet with students individually. The difference between my position and Judith's is these students would have a mental health diagnosis. We'd have a treatment plan, so we'd have goals that they would work on. I do also see, like, there are times where I might see like a student that isn't a client, might be having a bad day, Judith is busy, so they'll come in and they'll meet with me. So I do see students in that, in that way as well. I think the advantage of having a school-based position is, like, sometimes parents, if they're working, they can't get their child to an appointment because a lot of times, like in the outpatient world, those prime-time after-school spots fill up. So a working parent would have to get out of work each week or every other week and pick their child up from school, bring him to an appointment and then bring him back. So I think that's one of the advantages. Some of our families just don't have the transportation. So I think having a school-based position is advantageous in that way. I also do small groups and it's really based on the needs of the school. So we'll do social skills groups, conflict resolution, anger management, team building. Judith mentioned Scott. I'm also doing a group with Scott and it's kind of a team building slash a positive masculinity, so it's a boys' group. So we're doing that. Parents, I work with clients and their parents. So it might be work around, you know, parent coaching strategies in the home. Also, like, just working with teachers in a collaborative effort and attending like some of our school-based meetings being part of that. I think that's, questions? I mean, there's other little things here and there, but I think that's the highlight of the big pieces that I do here.
So many in this room are familiar with Maya Angelou, who was the author of the first frame that we saw. And if you just change a couple of words, it really seems to match our mission statement I was thinking over there. We all should know diversity makes a rich tapestry. And we must understand that all threads, students of the tapestry education are equal in value no matter what. And if you're familiar with Maya, she's really an amazing woman and she's done many accomplishments and contributions. She graduated from high school but did not pursue higher education, but Maya was a voracious reader. When Maya was seven, her mother's boyfriend raped her and he was jailed. After his release, her uncles murdered him and Maya became mute for five years. She felt like her words killed a man. So she went on to become very, very powerful civil rights activist. She was Hollywood's first female black director. But she came most famous for her writing and her playwrights and a poet. She experienced trauma, racism and sexism. And one of the quotes I like that I'm spinning off of, she said, "You may not control all the events that happen to you, but you can decide not to be reduced by them." And I feel like MTSS is a framework that can help students not be reduced by events, family events that might include accidents, illness and changes in financial, housing or food securities. They can include births, deaths, graduations, additions and promotions. There's lots of family events. And families need to attend to these events while they're still attending to their children's educational needs. And my tier is an extension that goes into the community and engages with the families to help assist with events such as these. So the counseling tiers, that I work with Judith and Lori, in terms of teamwork, we communicate resources that might benefit the families the best with the three of us on the tier of counseling. Judith often has conversations with families and she can give them my contact information if they need the resources that I'm familiar with in the community. That again includes the housing insecurities or food insecurities that might be happening. I know the case manager and I know the process to get involved in groundwork. I know that Carol Ray is our school district's... She's, well, we're trying to change the name to be more of a home secure liaison. So Carol and I are working on that, but you're right. Vermont Food Bank is also a big part of many of our food sources in our community. That includes Feeding America Backpack Program, where every child that wants to be involved with this gets a sack of food on Fridays to eat over the weekends. Vermont Food Bank also supplies produce that is veggie and go, which happens the first and third month. And I help pick up food and deliver to families that maybe are at work or just don't have the transportation available to get there. Another example of tier teamwork is if I'm working with a family that's, they're receiving family support or working on custody issues with DCF or maybe DCF is helping them in the home with their intensive family-based services. I can explain to that team the opportunities to be able to work with Lori because she's school-based, as she mentioned, that can be quite helpful for the families that have a lot of needs to be met. Sometimes an event changes families' heads of households. In other words, some event has created the need for a family member to take the role of parent. And I say parent because there's so many different caretakers in our families. And I say parent because there's so many different caretakers in our families. Often, this is a challenge to their work schedule. So there's been several events that I've met with the new, the caretakers that are working in the families suddenly, and they have a job schedule that they need to keep too. So we've been able to work together quite recently, several times already this year, to help find programs that maybe they are not familiar with the referral, or that they can get subsidized payments for, programs like Aspire has that, Boys and Girls Club has subsidized and after-school programs. And then other resources they might not be familiar, familiar with would be New England Youth Theater, the Rec Center. Actually, one of the caregivers suggested to me, for younger siblings, the Mulberry Daycare Program, and that's been helpful for others. I also continue to work very closely with Nurse Amy Young Health Emotional and their medical needs. So I find the tiers flow throughout my day. Some events seem small, but when families' events are so many or so powerful, the little events seem very stressful and do cause a lot of stress. Recently, I received a text from a father whose daughter forgot a flu. It seemed small, but I got the text, so I went and I talked to Ms. Davenport, I'm a scholar and a priest, sorry, Ms. Davenport, and she told me the plan of when you forget an instrument. And I just texted the dad, let him know, and it was small, but it was a relief. It was one less stress on him, and it was an engagement with the school. Connections with school and families are evidence-based to show an increase in student success. Schools that reach out to families and the community and build strong family-school relationships are found to have a positive impact on students. Marybeth Porter and Rachel Glickman are family engagement liaisons here at this school. They're academic support teachers and present a column every edition of our school paper called "The Color." And that, their goal, our goal, is to strengthen homeschool connections through that as well. Recently, and another tier, like, the tiers are fluid often, they're not just the colors coded like that. So recently, I got an email from Rachel, and she was like, "Wasn't there a way that families got a reduced internet? Because I have some students that can't afford the internet." And I remembered that, but I, so I went to the office, and soon I found a number. I called that, I was led to a website, I joined it, and I'm, now I'm able to get, I've ordered 100 to 200 flyers that we'll have in the front office and we'll give out for, at the parent-teacher meetings. And that's a real reduction, a real help. And you actually can fill out applications, get a reduced rate on a computer, $149.99. So that's good. Let's see, yes, and also, Marybeth and I have started a once-a-week program before all schools sing called PAC, Parents and Caregivers Together. In our first meetings, we talked about fixed mindsets and growth mindsets. And since then, we've also talked about how to get your child more engaged when you're asking them about their school day, so it's not, I was just, "How's your school day?" "Good." "How's your school, what happened?" "Nothing." So, and our hope is, actually, in time, the parents will actually come up with the agenda items and the topics of interest. So we're pretty excited about doing that. So also during those, even though we haven't, our numbers have been small, we're already starting to build relationships and make connections. It's small, but it's starting to help. At Academy and with the families, I believe we share this common goal, to increase student success in school and in the community. And there's a quote, I didn't read. It's a, I got it out of a type of literature review, so it's a little bit of a lot of different literatures. Although several research reviews have been published in this field, researchers and school leaders are still working to understand how to most effectively engage families, and which family engagement strategies lead to school improvement and increase student achievement, particularly in areas with underserved communities. So I'd like to end my part of the presentation with one more quote that, that Maya said. One thing I've learned is, I have more to learn.
All right, so now we are taking a turn toward the academics, and we're going to hear from our teacher leaders about some student case studies. I'll hand you this.
Okay, so, um, I might talk to you a little bit about the classroom, and when tier-one instruction isn't working for our students. And so we identify that in a number of different ways. One of the ways we do right off of that is we have some, like, well checks, just to see, like, how the students are doing coming into our class. But they don't often, or they don't always show everything with a student, and they're just like a screener, they're just to kind of give you a picture real quick. And the student I'm actually going to talk to you about, I have his, like, well check here for math, and you'll see that that didn't identify anything for me. The green means that he should be performing at grade level. And so when, when we have those well checks, sometimes that's a, a good, clear sign of, oh, we need to provide some intervention work to help get this student going with their math career. And sometimes, okay. But what I did notice looking at this student is, in third grade and in fourth grade, they were unable to pass the SBACK or meet proficiency at the SBACK. And right off the bat, in math class, he was unable to successfully meet the target in class. So they had low SBACK scores, he wasn't able to pick up the math concepts in class, and so I knew I needed to provide some extra math intervention work for him. However, he was, he was kind of an interesting student, because oftentimes, you'll see their basic fact fluency is a really big hang-up that, that leads to them not being successful in fifth, sixth grade. And he was by far my most competent with fact fluency, which is very interesting. Like, he had memorized every fact out there, and he was fast. He could get 200 facts done in a minute, like, no problem. But applying that was not going so well. And so there's a number of things that we look at doing. We do look for holes, like, are there holes that need to be filled? And you can do things to fill those holes, but often that's slow. And so some of his holes ended up being in place value, like, he didn't have a great understanding of place value, which will obviously impact your later work. And so we really had to go back to some really concrete place value work, and we had to go back to really concrete modeling of math work, to really build math reasoning. And so every morning, I would do some, some hole filling. And then the other issue you get into with a student who's struggling is their confidence is really low in class. They're, they're really not wanting to be in math class, because it has been such a struggle, and they're feeling unsuccessful, and they're feeling like they can't do it. And so one thing I did with this student that worked really, really, really well was I tutored him after school, and what I did was I pre-taught what I was going to be teaching in class the next week. And so when he was coming into math class, he was coming in feeling successful, because what I was saying was making sense, because he had already been introduced to the vocabulary, he'd already been introduced to the concept, he'd already done some really concrete work in that area, and in the skills that are, that we're building on in that area. And so, like, everything was, like, clicking, and he was feeling confident, and that really helped math feel like a successful area. And then, when we did the SBACK in the spring, was able to get a three on the SBACK, and not even just a three, a high three, like, almost a four. So really trying to nail where are those areas where we need to go back to the concrete, because by fifth grade, we're working pretty abstractly, and so we need to move back to using manipulatives, really modeling everything, and modeling basic before we move into fifth-grade concepts. And pre-teaching whenever possible, giving them that feeling of success, where they're hearing things that they've already heard, and they're seeing things that they've already seen, and they can actually take a leadership role, where they're like, "Ooh, I can model this for the class, and I can show the class how this works," just to build that success. So that's one way interventions might look in a classroom for math.
So Whitney Lynde is a special educator here with us. We were prepping two separate case studies for this presentation, me focusing on behavior supports, Whitney focusing on academic supports, and then we recognized that we were actually presenting a case study on the same student.
It's like a really comprehensive look.
So, but with this, what that tells you is, is what we see all the time in schools, the interconnectedness between behavior and academic, right? And it's a two-way street, where challenging behavior adversely impacts a student's ability to access an academic program, and academic struggles often leads to challenging behavior. And so we're going to talk about one particular student. This particular student came to us from another school when this student was in third grade. And we talked about her, the student's level of academic and behavioral performance at that time. So academically, this student was able to name 13 letters as a third grader. The student had very little letter-sound correspondence skills. The student could count to four. The student could recognize 70% of numbers between zero and 20. And not surprisingly, the student had a terrible association with school, and would literally be brought to tears every day talking about school and education. Behaviorally, the student, as a third grader, was unable to be independent in the classroom for any amount of time. We, there was regular physical intervention, which was necessary due to extremely unsafe behavior, putting themselves, peers, and staff in danger, which is the only time we would ever use physical intervention, is when there's imminent danger. And that was regular. And also not surprising that this, this student had no social connection or ability to develop or foster any friendships. It was, in my career in education, probably the most dire situation I've seen as a third grader. So this is an example of someone who's in the tier-three realm, both behaviorally and academically. Really challenged our systems here at Academy in terms of what we could provide a student. So here are elements of what, of what an intervention plan has been for the past two years. Fully differentiated classwork catered to the student's level. So when the student was in third grade and in fourth grade, we would modify all classwork and all to be things that they could approach independently. We had a high level of coordination between school, home, and outside service providers in the community. We had a positive behavior program, including reinforcement of on-task safe behavior. So things that the student would earn would be breaks, special lunches with peers. Our art teacher volunteered to do one-on-one art projects with this student, because that's, that was a really motivating thing. So every week, the student would earn half an hour with our art teacher. It was incredibly motivating, and it really became sort of a community really rallying around this kid, as this was really this kid's last stop in a public school. If it didn't work here, this student would be in an alternative placement. And frankly, in just about every other district in the state, the student would have already been in an alternative school. Academically, the student received 60 minutes daily of one-to-one instruction with Whitney, working on literacy skills. Whitney's a literacy specialist and a special educator, and that is a critical piece. We also allowed this, we created this program for the student to partner with a younger class, to take on a mentorship role, right, to give this student, for the first time in their life, a sense of purpose in school, like, them coming to school mattered, because, you know, that's a critical piece.
And a way to be a leader, too.
Yep, yep. And over time, we gradually increased the amount of time in the classroom with step paraeducator support. So our step program has a number of paraeducators for this purpose, to support students being in the general education classroom who need support to be there at the time. So we'll get into some data for this particular student. So starting when the student arrived at Academy School, this is frequency of physical intervention, spanning two years' time. And the graph sort of speaks for itself. Yeah, so, you know, this is not, not, the need is now nonexistent, from being very regular to now nonexistent, which is great. Academically, sort of past the, there is a laser on there. I don't know.
Okay, so I'm going to zoom into the academic, the tier-three academic piece, and specifically in literacy, because that is what I did with this student for an hour, one-on-one, every day for a year and a half. So that started with a Wilson reading system. It's a tier-three literacy intervention program that has years and years of research behind it. And we're lucky enough at Academy School to have three of our four research room special educators trained as Level One Certified Wilson instructors, which is great. So this student started at a really rough spot, because coming in at a third grader as a non-reader, you're really, you're at a huge disadvantage. 74% of third graders that are poor readers are poor readers in ninth grade. Like, you kind of, you kind of miss the early intervention time. And so, really, like John said, this was a crisis moment for this kid. So it was, "Is there any way that we can, we can catch you up?" And so the student got an hour of one-on-one instruction, which is really, it's really hard to find that kind of time and that intensity with a kid, but it's what had to happen for, for the student. So the student started in December with me in third grade, and we worked on reading basic CBC words like mop and lip and cat. And by June, we were reading two-syllable CBC words like magnet and cobweb. You know, and we were starting to read more in sentences and more in context and short passages, and that's how we ended third grade, and laid a lot of the foundation of early literacy that the student had missed in kindergarten and first and second grade. And then in fourth grade, we really, really got down to it. So fourth grade, the beginning of the year, these are percentile ranks. I know this is super, super hard to see. But basically, this first number is a word-reading measure. So at, for the student's age, they were reading below the first percentile, both regular and irregular words. This is a spelling measure, so at the second percentile for the student's spelling combined, word-reading and spelling below the first, and then this last one is a sound symbol, so, but that was a little bit higher, at the fifth percentile. So this was the beginning of fourth grade, really, all scores below the fifth percentile. You're hoping somebody's going to be around the 50th. So then, what I did is I put those scores over the top of the spring of fourth grade scores. So in the spring of fourth grade, I gave the same measure. The percentile rank went from below the first to the 63rd, which actually put the student at grade level going into fifth grade for reading. The spelling is still, that's still a struggle, it's at the 16th percentile. The student knows definitely not the student's favorite time of our work together. And then you can see this combined score also increased, and this hit that average mark as well. Something I'll say about this assessment is that it's not a timed measure. It was untimed, so the student was able to take their time, and, but it gave a really clear picture of just the magnitude of progress, that, you know, the, the grade levels that the student caught up in one year. And this is, the next graph is actually a timed measure. So in all of our schools, we'll give one-minute time tests in the fall, winter, and spring of grade-level passages. And so this graph shows where the student started in first grade, when they were not at Academy School. And it really, it really was, you know, a flat line. This is the point that they came to Academy School and began, you know, receiving the interventions that we offered. interventions that we offered. And by the spring of that year, the student had started to make some growth, and they were able to hold that over the summer, which was great. And then really, really just took off in, in fourth grade and, and got to that, you know, below average. This is where, you know, the rest of the peers are. And finally kind of got into the game a little bit and made, you know, years' worth of progress in, in one year. And so it's just an example of a kid receiving the intensity that they needed and showing some big gains.
And then just some, some final anecdotal data around this particular student is that the student is now in fifth grade and is fully participating in the fifth-grade general education classroom without any further step behavioral support. So they're now fully independent in the grade classroom without problem. The student identifies school as one of the most positive parts of their life, which is a pretty profound statement. The student has friends and strong social connections, and one of my favorite things is talking to her, the student's mom, who is literally brought, brought to tears, talking about her daughter's experience in school and her transformation.
So I'm just going to talk quickly about some correlation between behavior and academic growth and a student who received supports on the multi-tiered system in both of those areas and some of the success that I saw. So I teach fourth grade here at Academy, and this student basically received, was, needed a lot of, more of the Tier Two supports. So in the areas of behavior, the student received some of the universal classroom expectations, where we taught our second-step curriculum with Judith. I also do a lot of growth mindset activities with students and, of course, family engagement, so communicating often with families and making communication accessible for them. So some families may be more comfortable with email or phone or maybe direct messaging. So I've, you know, I work a lot with how to pull families in that maybe otherwise wouldn't necessarily reach out as often to the teacher to keep them on the same page with behavioral growth throughout this school year, as well as a Tier One support, which is a support for all students around behaviors, flexible seating. So seating, you know, changing seating often or allowing students to sit where they're more able to access their education, maybe focusing more by sitting in the front of the room or needing time to work quietly in the back of the room in a more comfortable space or such as like a standing desk. Related to that, with academic supports in the Tier One setting, the student received the core math and literacy curriculum, still with the family engagement, reaching out to families to talk often about their academic growth throughout the year, and also flexible seating. So that kind of shows some correlation between the Tier One supports around behavior and academic. In the Tier Two setting, so this is a student who came in somewhat low, needed some supports to bring them up in the areas of, you know, behaving in a manner of being able to access their education at the fourth grade level. So this student was not a student who was at the Tier Three level, where they were not considered a student that worked with the step program, but as a classroom teacher, I was able to collaborate and talk with the people that worked in step to help me develop and plan some type of informal behavior plan that I can work on with the student in the class, as well as a check-in-checkout system, which was talked about earlier, where the student was able to check in in the mornings and afternoons with a staff member other than me, who they felt comfortable with and was able to build a relationship with, so they could make plans for how to be successful in their day, in their academics and behaviorally in, in the classroom. So with that being said, so those are some of the Tier Two supports that the student was receiving around behavior. And then alongside that with academic, this student was on top of their core instruction in math and literacy. I was working directly with our academic support teacher to collaborate and plan some academic supports that this student could access related to their behavior plan. And we would work together to help that student succeed in their schoolwork and kind of rally around them behaviorally, were they positive and how they approached their work and whatnot. So the student received some extra support from academic support, whether that was sometimes push-in support or pull-out support, where they were provided some small group instruction with that teacher. And then we also, this student specifically was struggling in reading, so reading below grade level. And so we would progress monitor the student every, about every, twice a week, I think, or two, every two weeks, sorry, to track their reading fluency and see how they're coming along and progressing with approaching grade level. And this student also had some speech and language support, so that would be more of, what I would consider more of a Tier Three support in the academic area. So these are the results that I found with this student. I use a tool to track behavior in my classroom at the universal level, which also helps engage families as far as how students are performing in class. And what I saw in the fall is the student was struggling with a lot of just generally being off-task, disrespect, or talking out of turn. So their informal behavior plan was, you know, focused on those main goals. So this, so this shows in the fall and then in the spring, where we had some dramatic improvement in their behavior and how they could be a part of the school day and be a part of the entire class and succeed. And what I like to see is some correlation between the behavior data and their academic data. So I saw some nice improvement in behavior, as well as in this student's ability to improve their reading fluency, where we'll see, this is their fourth grade year. So coming up to this year, they've always, they've made progress every year, you know, kind of in the lower percentile. This student was able to succeed above, you know, more in the above-average range leaving fourth grade. And I believe this student also ended up receiving a four on the S-Back last spring. So she, the student also, entering every year, what I noticed is they kind, you know, they enter every year low on the scale. This student entered fifth grade, you know, not in that low level anymore, but in the more middle average range. So hopefully, the student will continue to just make those huge leaps and gains for the rest of their academic career. And that's all.
Okay, so I'm the last one of us that's going to share how that our students know. I'm going to talk to you about, so I'm putting my AST hat on, which is academic support. Right now, I work in third grade as academic support, and I want to talk about a specific student, but I'm going to talk about them from first grade all the way through sixth grade. I had them in third grade, and there's fifth grade teachers here as well. And I think one of the most important things about academic support teachers is that it, we're like a pivotal collaborative role, like our collaborative, the collaboration that we do with teams of teachers and the collaboration that we do with families, and we kind of try to plug in these pieces to create a whole for our students. So this student, you know, was here, has been here for the duration. He has a sibling that had been here, so the family is very comfortable and familiar with Academy. And he had some, some very challenging behaviors in his early years. He was diagnosed with ADHD in first grade, and you'll see, I'll show you his literacy progress over time, but it really shows that in his early years, he was not very available for, for learning. He came to third grade, and that year in third grade, I was a classroom teacher, but I was also co-teaching with Bryn Tucker, who's at Green Street now, and we had a very close connection with our academic support teacher at that time, Rachel Glifman. And we really, the three of us spoke, Bryn and I spoke multi, multiple times over the course of the week, and we both met separately with Rachel in order to develop a really comprehensive idea for how to support his literacy instruction. He participated in small group instruction in the classroom with Bryn and I, and then he also had pull-out instruction in his, with the academic support teacher, but we worked hard to align that instruction. So I think that's the, the goal for us, is that our academic support teachers have that connection with our classroom instruction, so that what we're supporting is really cohesive for our students. We also noticed in third grade, and you'll see on the trajectory, he was really low in decoding, so we worked really hard with him on that. And then when we got to spring, realized, okay, now he's got decoding, but his comprehension was weak. So as he went off to fourth grade, we, we met with them and set them up with that idea that, okay, now this is, this is really his area of weakness, and they worked really hard with him on comprehension. Another thing he participated in that's kind of a hat that academic support folks wear is the piece of connecting with homes. So he was a kid that summer that we tried a little pilot, where I picked a couple kids and brought books to them. And so I went to his house once a week throughout the summer and sat with him, and we read, and I brought books, and the family had books, and it was all very sweet and wonderful. He really loved that. And then this past year, his sibling, I actually worked with a sibling at his house, and so that was another extra cool thing, because as I went into their house, he was, you know, I was bringing him books too, even though I wasn't really there to see him. So it was a nice summer, you know, a nice family connection. As he went off to fifth grade, Tess can tell you a little bit about his experience in fifth grade.
Sure, as I got to fifth grade. He, I'll come up, sorry.
He was a fluent reader, and his comprehension was super strong. So the reading interventions and support that had followed him through the grade really paid off. He no longer needed extra support in reading. However, his writing was still an area of struggle. So we did some, some writing interventions as well. So yeah, so you can see from, so you can see, starting in first grade, he really, he came in kind of looking like, well, maybe he's going to be okay, he's below, but he's not so far below, and then he stayed there. By second grade, he did start working with, so he had no academic support here. Second grade, he did pull-out academic support with Kathy Casson, working on basic decoding. Third grade, basic decoding, and about mid-year, we started really noticing that comprehension gap and worked with him. But each year, he got a little closer to the median. And by fourth grade, he was at the median, and fifth grade, he surpassed the median with tests, and this year, he came in well above. So I just feel like he's a really good picture, a portrait of really good collaboration across grades, with teams, and really addressing, you know, a variety of literacy needs over time. This is his S-Backs course. These are his S-Backs course. Third grade, struggled, he wasn't understanding what he was reading, that's evident. Fourth grade, he got a little better, and by fifth grade, he was in the group. So it's something that I think we all, all the teacher leaders kind of hold as a really important aspect that we're excited to focus on this year, is that piece of collaboration. And some things that we're really going to work hard around are developing PLCs, and we're working with, with Kelly and John to develop a plan for monthly PLC work that we will focus on reading streak, but we'll also focus on developing a culture of collaboration with our, with our staff, and also developing a system for peer observation. That's something that has kind of ebbed and flowed within our building, and we're excited to bring it back and get people out of their own classrooms and into other classrooms and really support how that happens.
I'm sensitive of the time. I just want to thank everybody that presented. You guys are so passionate and excellent. This I can skim through really quickly. It's just a list of what we have currently that's sort of a supplemental program, but that makes a huge impact for a ton of our kids. Our Forest kindergarten program's grown immensely. We're actually putting up a three-sided structure in the next couple of weeks out there. There's a fire pit. Some of the classes spend full days outside. We've got rain gear, we've got snow gear, it's a big draw to our school. The kids are joyful when they're out there. I try to get out there when I can, and it's some of my favorite time, just to see what they're doing out there. All of the grades use the nature trails. We have a resource map for staff that we'll show you maybe another time when the counselors present, maybe. Tess led the way for this last year, and what it is, is a list of all of our staff members and community agencies and resources and what people have to offer. So Tess, do you want to give the example you just gave to me the other day?
Sure, yeah. It's just really helpful. Like I was meeting about a student, and there's, there's only so much we can do inside the classroom, and that's basically meet their academic needs. It's hard to meet the needs of like the home life. And so I was really struggling, and I was going to meet with a parent, and I pulled out the resource map, and I went through it, and I came up with everything that might help this student. He, he had some dietary issues that were affecting his ability to sleep and his ability to, to learn, really. And that's not something that we can necessarily control in the school, but being able to sit down with that parent and have like, okay, these are resources that are available in our community, here are the phone numbers, here, like, would you like me to call? You know, and it, it was just so helpful to have that right at my fingertips, not to have to do any research, but here it is, all laid out, and it really made for a much more successful meeting that hopefully will lead the way to getting resources for the, for that child to help.
And our after-school programs, this is a goal for us this year to continue to expand our offerings. We've added a couple of new programs this fall, which are world drumming and printmaking, among the other things that you see up there. So a lot of kids take advantage. We're hoping to keep broadening their horizons and keep them at school for that extra hour as much as we can. The last thing I have is a three-minute video of kids telling what they like about Academy School.
I play dog.
Play in the forest and climb trees. I love to, and I like to swing a lot.
Teacher speaks to me really kindly.
And I love to draw.
I love your book.
I love spending time outside and playing outside.
Mr. Rain gets, let us have math a lot.
Gym, I like, we saw some squeeze machine.
I love music because we get to learn all different instruments with the saxophone.
I like Academy School because the teachers are always helping out and they welcome everybody. So I think it's a fun place to be.
Art helps me be more of a creative person outside of school. I like about all of the projects that we get to do that I probably won't be able to do at home because I don't have the materials.
So we grab a number and we go, and we're going to count all the way to three. One, two, three. Three, four, five, six.
So now we know that three plus three equals six.
Academy School bring, brought me into a theater career that I love to this day. It started, was it three years ago? And it was the player Red, which kickstarted me into doing N Y T a lot more, or, and it's just been growing. I've been meeting people, making new friends, wanting more.
So the thing I like about Academy School is the fact that our teachers are so willing to help us and bring us to get ready for middle and bring us to get ready for middle school. And I think everybody here is, especially like, once you get to sixth grade, all of your classmates are really fun. I think the reason for that is our teachers help us grow. And the students here are just nice enough to think good things about each other rather than bad things.
So thank you all. I know it's a lot of extra time and work and energy putting this together for us, so that we can just get a glimpse of what your daily lives are like. So we really appreciate it, and it's, it's beneficial because it's on camera now, so obviously, we don't get large numbers of people that come to our meetings, but I do know people watch, so they will, the community will be able to see it, and we will be able to bring it also to the town rep meeting as well. So thank you so much for all of your help and your work.
I just want to say also, and I really especially appreciate it in hearing the case studies to see how much the emotional piece that might be keeping students from learning was considered, even just for the purely academic supports. And I think that's something that's not obvious, that would be getting in their way. But it was really obvious from the results that considering that was really impactful. And I just think it really speaks to how much the school looks holistically at the kids and not just at the scores. So kudos to everybody who looked at things and figured out a solution that way.
And, and I did have tears when you were explaining your, it wasn't just the parent. Tears over here, too.
Just to build on what Kim said, the, knowing these things, hearing them from you and having these anecdotes and sort of the fabric of what goes on, rather than just, oh yeah, it's a school, we do these things, makes it much easier for us to talk with people and explain and respond to questions and concerns from the community. So, thank you for coming.
Yes, and please let your coworkers, and I know people have to leave early. It's late nights, we appreciate your time. Please let them know, those that had to leave, that we really truly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Yeah, thanks for what you all do. So I think that was just about it. Is there anything, next agenda items? That's the only thing that, I don't, if there's anything left, if there's anything else we needed to do? Kelsey, Kelsey, you got all that earlier, stuff in the notes. All right, well then, I will take a motion.
I move that we do during the meeting. A second, whatever.
All in favor? Aye. We made it up for seven.